Adrienne Brightfelder, City Clerk, you are hereby directed to call a special session of the City Council to be held on Tuesday, January 3, 2023 at 5:30 PM in the historic Federal Building for the purpose of conducting a work session on the Black Heritage Survey.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to a special session of the Dubuque City Council for January 3, 2023. As a reminder to viewers and listeners, due to the nature of tonight's meeting topic, public input is not accepted. However, you may contact the City Council directly from the city's webpage at www.cityofdubuque.org/councilcontacts. Attendance for the session is as follows: Mayor Kavanaugh,
Here.
Council members Farber,
Here.
Jones,
Here.
Resnick,
Here.
Rousell,
Here.
Sprank,
Here.
Wethel,
Here.
City Manager Van Milligan,
Here.
And City Attorney Brumwell. Thank you. Our work session topic is the Black Heritage Survey. I will turn it over to Assistant Planner Chris Happ Olsen.
Or
Or to
Wally Wernhermott. We need to do the grand introduction to Chris Happ Olsen because she's been doing such a great job. Wally Wernhermott, Planning Services Manager with the City of Dubuque. As I mentioned, you know, Chris has been the project coordinator for this position. And with regards to the Dubuque Black Heritage Survey, we also have Bill Doyle, one of our members over at Historic Preservation Commission, is present with us tonight. So, we're going to be giving an update of where we're at with this great project. There's a lot of information that's being pulled with our research, a lot of community engagement that's going on. And we've had constant people reaching out to us to give presentations. If I said, "Hold off, we really need to be talking to our council members first," kind of give you an update of where we're at and where we're going. So, I'll let Chris take it away. Thanks.
He was kind. He didn't move the podium for me, or for himself. I'm Chris Happ Olsen, Assistant Planner. I work in historic preservation, and I have been privileged to be able to work on this project over the last year. We started early this, in 2022, and will finish up in mid, about mid-2023. It's not due to the state until the end of the year. So, this is an exciting project because it's a project unlike any other survey we've done in the past. It really requires diving deep into our black history to be able to understand it. And that way, we can really weave it back into Dubuque's history and make it part and parcel of our story. So, I'm going to give you a little background, and then we're going to look at a GIS story map that we created, which is literally just that, stories. We're only going to be able to see part of it, but I encourage you to go back and view it afterwards, too. So, this project was made possible through a grant from HRDP, and that's the Historic Resources Development Program. It's through the Iowa Department of Cultural Affairs. And what it allowed us to do was to be able to hire a consultant team. We got a $30,000 grant, and we hired WOFC Valley Archaeology. They're creating a multiple-property document form that allows us to do the research of the people and places, events, that make up Dubuque's black history. We encouraged them to bring consultants on the team because we knew this was going to be a different approach. So, we asked for outreach and genealogy, which is unusual. Normally, when we, when we go ahead and do this work, we don't have genealogy. We really hire a consultant that goes out and does the work for us. We assist them, but it allows them to do the work. We really knew we were going to have to dig in deeper with this to be able to find the stories. So, I guess we're getting that here. So, I'm going to tell you a little bit about a survey. It's a little different. People call and ask, "What is this survey? Are you calling around and talking to people?" We are doing a little bit of that. But a survey, an architectural survey, is really an understanding, surveying the land, and what is on our lands. We, in historic preservation, we care about the built environment and the history behind that, too. We've had many surveys. You know, Dubuque is a leader in Iowa for historic preservation. We've been doing this for 50 years. It's 2023. Our first survey was through the state in 1973, so 50 years ago. The blue form that you see up there is from our 1978 and 1979 survey. That survey looked at every single building in the city limits at the time, even garages, and made an analysis of it. And some of the buildings that they thought were historic, they created a form, and they went around. It was really cursory. They just looked at buildings and guessed on, you know, they had an educated guess about the age and the style, and what the building's made of, and what changes have happened over the years, and how significant it is. So, we went back and resurveyed in the early 21st century. And those were done by Jim Jacobsons. We had six different phases. You could see the downtown, the north end, the Point Neighborhood, and the Hill Neighborhoods are all included in those surveys. So, that's a more intensive, neighborhood-focused survey. But when we survey, we usually think about, "Let's look for those historic buildings, and then let's research those histories." And we knew that that was not going to work based on the nature of the history that we were researching with our Black Heritage here. So, our West 8th Street neighborhood, we had a hunch going into this that this was really historically the seat of settlement for Black Dubuques, all the way back to 1840. And so, we realized we also had not surveyed that area. You see, the red part is part of our downtown survey, kind of bleeding into this neighborhood. But then, between University and Hill Street, and all the way over to Roberts, we really don't have that area surveyed. So, therefore, we don't know what kind of resources there are there. We don't know what the history is of the buildings. And we also haven't protected the area because we need to do surveys. Surveys are very important to be able to have objective information when you go in. And you're looking at, what is National Register eligible? What is important to our history? So, all along, you know, we're leaders in preservation. We're using the National Park Service standards. We're doing what they want us to do, using, to be able to create surveys and understand our history in Dubuque. But it hasn't resulted in survey, in stories about Black Dubuques. And yet, they've been here all along. So, we have issues that we have to grapple with, with how are we going to make this work? What happens when, you know, we've surveyed other areas, and we created conservation districts to protect from unnecessary demolition? We created National Register Historic Districts to engender pride in a community. We create local historic districts because the community, the neighborhood wants to be able to protect an area. But if we haven't surveyed them, we don't have that ability to do that. So, we make choices early on, and that leads to protection of some areas and not others, as a result. We choose to tell some stories of some community leaders, but not others. We have disinvestment in neighborhoods that have happened over time, and that's a very complicated story. Sometimes, the places are gone. Buildings have been torn down. And so, we have gaps in buildings. We have gaps in history, and we haven't told that. So, we're really looking at, okay, what are we valuing here? Are we valuing fine architecture and the homes and businesses of people that we consider our community leaders? Or are we valuing the stories of people as we move forward? So, that's how, that was really our guiding light there, was to be able to say, "Okay, we need to, we need to turn this around and determine what we're going to value in order to be able to find the stories and the historic places, too." This is the, kind of what we came to. If we continue to use the same tools and methods, we're going to get the same results. So, we kind of needed to break what we've done before and add to it. We're still using the methods the National Park Service gives us to be able to create a multiple-property document form, but we're layering other techniques into this to be able to find the stories we want. So, normally, when we hire a consultant, we help them, planning services staff. We're going to have the Historic Preservation Commission supporting them. But we knew with this one, we needed a much bigger group to help us. So, we engage Lawrence College and the University of Dubuque with classes that are doing research. We have community leaders, volunteers, that are subject experts, that, historians that are helping with certain areas of the research. We have Heritage Works that's helping us kind of frame and helping make the information digestible so people can understand it because it's a lot to understand. We have a support from our Equity and Human Rights Commission, as well as our Office of Shared Prosperity, in order to be able to outreach for this, and then, of course, our Historic Preservation Commission. One thing also was different is that we brought on our GIS department. So, being able to bring in Nikki Bright Rosemeyer and have her help us be able to outreach and start to tell the story through visual mapping. So, the work that we're doing requires a change, and that means researching people, families, calling people that used to live here, talking to people about people they knew before, and finding the places that relate to them. And we're saying, "You know what? It's all right. If the building's not there, we understand it, but we want to record the story anyway." So, we're doing this to be able to understand the story of our neighborhood, and then also be able to understand the places that we have here. And that's really important for being able to interpret the history and make it relevant for Dubuques in the future. So, we have a GIS story map that we created. It wasn't required as part of the HRDP grant, but it was really necessary for us to be able to talk to people about this. And so, we have Nikki to thank for that, and Bill's been helping with that as well. So, this is a picture of Sister Lucy, who was the only Black nun over at Mount St. Francis. And this is her working at the school that she was raised at back in Chicago after she became a nun. And so, I'm going to take you out to our GIS story map. It is a work in progress. And so, we're changing it and making modifications every day. It really does have empowering stories. It also has original language and documents from our Telegraph Herald and from other newspapers, from our city directories, all sorts of different information. Some of the information is offensive, and it's certainly racist. But it's a presentation of our findings, and so, that's what we're doing to be able to tell this more complete story. So, we'll take off, and it magically appears. All right. So, this is our story map. We just threw it together this year to be able to, we knew we needed to be able to kind of piece together the information to be able to show the different kind of stories that we have. And I'm in, there we go. The, I'm sorry, the landing map is, it's a little hard to see, but right under the words uncovering Dubuque, that's our 8th Street neighborhood. And this is an 1889 panorama of our city that is so helpful to us because even, buildings are even marked and then labeled down below. So, we know where buildings were. So, we'll keep going here. This is a points-of-interest map. And so, this allows us to, we can zoom in and zoom out on this and be able to see the whole community. We can see over in Deerville Neighborhood, we have Restrictive Covenants over there. There's some down on Simpson, different points of interest. And you can, you can go into each point of interest to be able to explore it, and it'll take you to different points on the map. So, this is Saul Butler. He was over at the University of Dubuque and a graduate of University of Dubuque, as well as an Olympian the next year. So, this map really looks at 1830 to 1980. We cut it off at 1980 because the National Park Service has a standard of really allowing the test of time. Let a building sit for 50 years before you go back and try to determine whether it's historic. Now, sometimes, you can go back sooner than that, but that's generally a good, it's a good rule. So, we let that kind of stew for a while and see if a building makes it that long and if it's historic at the end of that. So, we cut it off at 1980. We thought that would be a nice time period to cover, and it's 150 years, which is kind of a lot, I'll tell you. So, we have many stories, and I'm not going to go through all of them. There's no way. I'm going to go through about two-thirds of them. The first one is about churches. And what I have to say going into this, like Charlotte and Nathaniel Morgan, they were, they financially contributed to the first church in Iowa. They were landowners here in Dubuque in 1835. They actually owned Lot 1 of the Village of Dubuque, which we were like, "What does Lot 1 mean? That's a weird legal address." And it's literally like Lot 1, the bar. That's First and Main, you know, that, that lot there, that is their land there. So, they were leaders in our community. And Nathaniel was tragically, horrifically lynched in Dubuque in 1840. Charlotte stayed in Dubuque later, but it's our first story that we had, the earliest story of a Black family here. And it's a tough one. There are tough stories in here. But there's also stories of, you know, we're starting to put flesh on the bones to be able to understand that there's more to Charlotte and Nathaniel's life than his tragic end. So, we can go through, I'm not going to go through the churches because it's a long one, but we have imagery that shows us where we know the real first church was. So, the Black Church was associated with the Methodist Church. They started out a block south in Washington Square where that first church of Iowa was. Methodist Church built another church at the Dubuque Museum of Art, and then moved on, and the Black Church moved in. So, very early on, in 1868, we have the Black Church over at that building at the Dubuque Museum of Art. We also have the Black School there in the basement, too. So, when I say the Dubuque Museum of Art, that's a 1980s, 1990s bank. I mean, the building that was there before and pictured here. And so, we can go through and see when, you know, the African Methodist Episcopal Church built their own church on Robinson Avenue, and then really looking for a home after that in the 1920s and 30s. Their church, I think they had outgrown it, and it was also dilapidated. So, they had to move on. And so, you see them struggling with trying to find a place to worship, as well as struggling with their numbers after the 1920s. We have, you know, lots of stories, like Ralph Montgomery, who was a slave who came here, and in 1839, it was our first Supreme Court case in Iowa where Ralph was supposed to pay back the person that had enslaved him in order to become free. And the Supreme Court said, "You know what? You can't, he has to pay it back, yes, but you can't say that he lives in Iowa and that he's a slave." And so, he became free at that time, still had to pay his debt. But that is a landmark case. And here's one of my favorite. It is about the schools. The schools are from 1860s to 1870s. We have a lot of interesting work going on in Dubuque around the school. We, our school board records go back to 1830, and we were just able to take a look at those. There are some typed ones. There's handwritten ones. They're difficult to go through. We've got over 800 pages scanned that we're going to be going through. And we start to see activity as far as talking about the Black students as early as 1856 and 1857, where it's mentioned that the children are prohibited from enrolling in those ward schools. But by 1864, 1865, different things are going on nationally. We've got the Civil War is coming to an end. And in 1864, the Board decides to open a school. We don't have a lot of information about this, but we see that there is tension in the community about that. And we've, we've got, in 1866, there's a petition to create a permanent school. There's other petitions not to do that, that it will, there's fear mongering that has spread throughout the Telegraph Herald that says that more Blacks will come to our community if we do this. And so, but they continue to run the school. We've got lots of different information that we get from our city directories, the Telegraph Herald, and the school board notes. But, you know, in 1867, we've been running the school for a few years. In Mesquiteen, there's a young girl, Susan Clark, and she was denied admission to one of their ward schools. Her father was very active down in Mesquiteen, and he actually brought the court forward, or the case forward, and it went to the Supreme Court of Iowa. So, this is 1868. This is 86 years before the Brown versus Board of Education. And the Supreme Court of Iowa held that separate was not equal, and that Black children could not be refused admission to Iowa's district schools. And we continue to struggle. We, this comes up a lot over the next 10 years. We have schools being run. There's a, there's a time, so when I say a free school, that would be a school run by Dubuque Community Schools. When I say a ward school, that is a school that, one of the ward schools that's run by Dubuque Community Schools, but not the school for Black children. And so, we see them being able to run that. They rent out the basement of the Centenary Church underneath the African Methodist Episcopal, where they're worshiping. And we see them supporting it with $15 for a picnic for the students. We see the, the schools being examined, and we also see tension in the community. There's, in 1875 and 1876, this is printed in the Pioneer, the St. Paul Pioneer. So, it's printed in the Pioneer, but it's also picked up in the TH. So, nationally, we're being watched about what's going on here in Dubuque. We have a separate school, as it says, for colored children, that has been sustained by the Board of Education and has been perfectly satisfactory to the colored people. But now, it's proposed to break up and scatter the pupil amongst, pupils among other schools, hence the discussion of the question and all its bearings in the local papers. And in 1866 and 1867, we have the schools closed because it is no longer, it's not legal to do it. They were told back in, you know, with Susan Clark's father taking the case to the Supreme Court, they've tried to maintain a separate school, but they, they keep running into issues. And so, it's closed. We don't really know yet what the outcome is after that. In 1880, there was a census with about 100, with 159 Black people counted. And, but by 1885, there were only 55, 58 people left. So, a huge drop in population. And it comes after the closing of the schools. We don't know how the students were received at those ward schools when that Black School was closed. But it really is an interesting part of our history there. So, the GIS story map goes through fraternal organizations. We've got the Masons, which is the Prince Hall Masons, meeting in a couple of different places throughout downtown and the Hill Neighborhood, or the University Avenue, essentially. We have other organizations like the Independent Order of 12, which was formed back in 1845 as an anti-slavery organization. And we see people that we know, like Dr. Henry Rose is serving as the Vice President of the Independent Order of 12. So, we've got, you know, different social structures which are supporting that Black community, Black Dubuques supporting other Black Dubuques. And here's Dr. Henry Rose. So, he was the first person that I really got to research, and he's a favorite of mine. He's an incredible figure. He was born in Missouri, in the institution of slavery, either 1842 or 1844. He fought or served units in the Civil War. And so, believe he was, he's a caterer during the war. So, I don't know if he served multiple units or one particular unit. We're trying to research that. And by 1880, he's living in this little house on Clark Street. And it is, he's living with another woman, who I think is an elderly woman, so like helping her. And then, in that decade, he owns it. He gets married to his wife, who's a white German woman. They have three children, and they raise them here. And I'm just going to read this to you. This is just great to hear. This is, this is 1882, so he was already in the house. "An honest man is the noblest work of God, and the man who pays his debts is the noblest work of his maker. These sentiments are called to mind from the fact that Henry Rose, the Julian House porter, found Frank A. Parker's pocketbook containing $50 and several checks," that was a lot of money, "and immediately returned it to him. Mr. Parker handsomely rewarded Mr. Rose." We have another caught on the fly. It's kind of like going-ons in Dubuque, where it talks about Henry Rose going out and being the cook for this gathering of military veterans here. We have him involved in the Independent Order of 12, so leadership in the community. And, and then we look at real estate. So, he, we know that he sold this house because he first bought a house on West 14th Street. We think it's right, it's right west of the chapel at Hoffman Hall on Lawrence. So, it's no longer there. It's a part of the campus now. And he bought it for $2,150. And it's recorded here in the Telegraph Herald in mid-June of 1891. And two weeks later, in the municipal, memiscical molecules, the Telegraph Herald, that's kind of a gossip column, from what I can understand from reading a lot of these, "A white woman bought a house on West 14th Street, and it developed. A colored man claimed the woman was his wife. It is thought the purchase was made so the neighborhood would give him a bonus to sell out." So, they've forgotten that two weeks ago, they wrote that Henry Rose was at the sale and bought it. And then, the next day, they record the sale of his home in the Telegraph Herald. So, we, we have Black Dubuques persevering and also facing a lot of hardship. But I keep calling him Dr. Rose. In the 1890s, he left Dubuque, became a teropodist, which is a podiatrist, and came back to Dubuque and was in practice here in multiple locations at the same time, in the BNI Building, which is our Fisher Building, in the Julian Inn, and different locations as a podiatrist through 1919, when he died. So, we've got lots of ads for him. And here is an article, when the Julian Hotel burned, they, on the top of the fold, first page, they interviewed Dr. Rose, because he was a very well-known figure in the community. And so, they interview him about, about his time at the Julian House, and he also says that, you know, "I have no doubt that it will be rebuilt." So, the plot for his, his cemetery plot is over in Linwood. It's unmarked, but we found where it was in January. And so, we've got this great leader in our community, but he's also doing other things, like influencing other people, like Dr. Henry Martin and family. Henry Martin was born in 1874 and came to Dubuque around 1905, and he's pictured here in 1912 at Clay's Barber Shop. This would be a Yen Cheng Restaurant. And so, Henry, he knew Henry Rose, and Henry Rose influenced him. And by 1916, he had gone off and gotten his own teropodist degree and came back. And it was often associated with barber shops, too. Henry Rose was also a porter in a barber shop before. And he came back to Dubuque and really made a, he and his wife Maddie had nine children. And I don't know whether it's four or five, became and I don't know whether it's four or five, became troopodists. Grandchildren became troopodists. Here's a picture of, of what it used to look like, and then what it looks like today. But most famously, I think, here we have a picture of the house that they lived on Eighth Street. This, it was a row of residences for, for black folks in Dubuque. So everybody lived on this strip. Thank you. And so we have different information for Henry Rose, but of course, you know, his son, Henry Martin. So Henry Martin, Captain Robert L. Martin, was a Tuskegee Airman and was raised in the house at 560 Hill Street, which still stands today. And of course, we know that his, that the airport is now named after him. So I'm not gonna go into Henry Martin's life, but it is a remarkable one. But it was really an incredible story of Dr. Rose back in Missouri in the 1840s, all the way to today, with Henry, you know, Henry Martin's children and grandchildren and great-grandchildren bettering their communities. So we also have other stories, too. This is generally in chronological order, but we had a rally in 1926, and these photographs were given to us, to the city of Dubuque. Tim Horstfeld helped preserve them, along with another collection. And so we really saw a rise in the Ku Klux Klan nationally and in Dubuque in the 1920s. And it was a backlash, really, it came, the, the rise, and it came after the Great War. So with a sentiment against Catholics and Germans, but also black people. So these are just some images that, that don't need a lot of explanation. I tend to think the man on his right is hiding his face. That's speculation. And this is the back of a truck here with the motto. So we have things like this, which draw people in. You see, this is a Dubuque County Klan. And then we also have individual stories. This was given to us, a friend actually had given it to me. He's from Minnesota, but they had investigated, they were remodeling a house at 2270 Woodsworth, and went into the newel post, which is at the bottom of the stairs. And that's a common place to hide things like building plans or a time capsule. And they found this information in it. So it was a way of being able to put a little time capsule in the house. And so I, and I've actually been editing this today. I got some new information. I saw him over the holidays, and so we were able to get more information, but. So it's 2270 Woodsworth Street, and the owner was a, somebody that developed the house, who lived in the pink, the pink house on the right, Grover Hach. And, and he and a group of friends or coworkers, they built it together, but they were all Klansmen, so. So we've got a photograph of the house here. And again, so this is an envelope that the information was found in. And it's modern homes built by G.C. Hach, and it contains the names of the men that built this house, so they were proud of that. And on the back, it says, "If this is found before this house is to be completely destroyed, kindly replaced so it will be seen and read on that day." And it says, "The Order of the Ku Klux Klan of the City of Dubuque, Iowa." And then it also has plastering by Charles Siderly and George Corman, because they forgot to put him on the other side of the information. This is the note inside. So it lists the men that worked on the house, and it says it was built during the years of 1925 and 1926, and it was built by the men belonging to the Order of the Ku Klux Klan and one hundred percent Masons of Dubuque. And there's another piece of wood that's inside that's inscribed. I, we're not sure if this is a Masonic number membership. I'm thinking that that's what it is. There's numbers next to each name, but it goes through, it lists the, the folks. So that, that landing page here, G.C. Hach, who owned this property, he lived here and then later made this his home. He was very active in the Masons and became the leader. He had a number of different titles of leadership over the years, but became the leader. His wife was active, too. And then we've also got this house here as Ellsworth Avery, who was living with his parents, and is actually the uncle of the person that gave this to me, so that's how he knew about it. And so, you know, we have lots of information about Irma and Grover Hach, who lived in that house and wrote that note. So there's article after article, so. And we have time, sir? Six oh six, thank you. So we have lots of stories throughout this GIS story map. And they are of incredible people like Theatrist Gibbs, who was captain of the football team. Research says that he was the first black captain of a football team in America, which doesn't make any sense, because there were lots of black schools out there. So, so he may have been the first black captain of an integrated school, a largely integrated school. He went to the University of Dubuque. He was an incredible athlete. He played with Jay Berwanger under Coach Dalzell at senior. Jay is actually, I'll show you Jay. There's Jay Berwanger right there, the first Heisman Trophy winner. And so it's not very often that I get excited about sports. And so we have information about Theatrist Gibbs. He lived on the strip on Eighth Street. Also on that strip, the longest continuing family that we know of, the Scott family, still live here and moved here in the 1940s, lived, I think, in this one, and still live along this strip in a different house. There's a picture of Sandra and her siblings there. We've got Sanborn maps that help us piece things together, Sandra's family. We have Ruby Sutton, such a leader in our community, who lived up on Air Hill over here, came here in the 1950s. Of course, Lynn was the first black city councilperson. We have the Johnson family. Florine Moore, her name is now. She contacted us earlier this year, and we were able to bring Florine out for one of our outreach sessions for this, and she was able to tell us about living here in Dubuque for the nine years that she lived here. And so her father came because of the railroad, worked for the IC. She was, they were able to ride the railroad for free. She would talk about, her mother would make, you know, a lunchbox or a shoebox full of fried chicken, and they got to take it, and they got to go on trips because of that. She said she really loved her time in Dubuque. There's a picture of the land of corn, the train they used to ride. Looks pretty elegant. Florine remembers going to Chrisel's Grocery, and, and I got her okay to tell the story. She said she stole an apple. There used to be baskets of apples outside. Here's actually a photograph of the grocery store. So there were baskets of apples outside, and she took one. And she was very young. She was probably like six. And Mr. Kissel called her father, and she said she never stole anything again after that time. But it was great to be able to have her share her story. And we have restrictive racial covenants. We haven't found a lot. We found obviously more than we'd want to find, but we're still looking for these. This one is specifically from the Dearville neighborhood, where it specifies that black people cannot live there in the deed. And so we were able to find this by just talking, as we, we did some surveying in the neighborhood, talking to one of the owners and asking if we could see their, their abstract. And we're able to find the information. So. What's that?
Sixteen.
Okay, thanks. We also have, we found restrictive covenants in Albert's Edition, which is over on Simpson's. It's a small area. We have some leads on some other streets in Dubuque, specifically like Victoria Place, we think. But this one, instead of identifying black people, it identifies non-Caucasians, so, other than the Caucasian race, unless they were working at a property. So this is a part of the story we have not really outlined yet, which is housing in Dubuque, especially in the 20th century, and how difficult it is. And it really has to do with the Depression and surveying that we did in 1934 for our health and housing, reports that came out after that. Those reports were used in our comprehensive plan. It identified areas like the area where the church was, Robinson Street, Rock Street, East Rock Street, to be completely removed and created into green space or a business district. And then the 1950s, we did go in and do that, so through urban renewal, earlier than some communities. And so, so that is a more complicated story. There's a lot to it. We talk about Bill helping us with trying to frame it, to understand it. That's something that we're working to do. We're also working to try to visualize the Eighth Street neighborhood, so you can get out and experience it and see the different places, even if the buildings are gone, being able to hear the stories of people that lived there. So this is Sister Lucy, who we saw before. I'm not gonna go through her, her story. We have the Green Book here in Dubuque, a national publication that allowed black Americans to travel safely. So it was something that you would take with you, and, and you would look and see where can you get a meal? Is this a sundown town? Is there a place I can stay overnight that's safe? Is there a place I can go to the bathroom in a town? So we were listed in, we just had a few listings in the Green Book. Seven twelve University is still standing, and so is seven ninety-five Roberts. They were both tourist homes, and lots of people, including Dr. Martin and Florine, who I talked about, lived at this seven twelve university here. And then the Canfield Hotel is listed. There's also another hotel called France Motel. I think that that's a mistake. I think that's from Illinois, so we're still trying to figure it out. Some of our contributors are, Catherine Coats over at Loris College helped us with researching three great articles on Loris College. So the Black Culture and Empowerment Movement, there is an article on the, there's Father Coats, the black, the athletic hair policy, and then also the sit-in at Henyon Manor. And so that is toward the end of our map. The last entry is pretty long, and that's a really an interesting one to get into. It's the, it's the Iowa State Bystander, which was a black newspaper, and it's really a great thing because it's for, really, one of the first times to be able to see the black experience in Dubuque from the black perspective. So these are articles that are submitted to that newspaper. So they really, you see everyone interacting together, supporting each other. It's really, it's a great thing that we have here. This one specifically says, "Although we haven't been heard for a while, we are still alive. The colored population of the key city has decreased to such an extent that we can now only count about seventy-five men, women, and children." So that's 1902. And, but it goes on to talk about the good things that the citizens are doing and trouble that they're having, people that are sick, events that happen, people that visited. It really does, does help bring it to life, so. So again, there's a lot more in the map that I didn't cover, but I encourage you to look through it. I'd be happy to answer questions.
All right. Well, thank you so much, Chris. This is absolutely fascinating, and I very much appreciate you being here to tell us more about it. So let's go questions, and then we can talk a little bit more. Yeah, Ms. Farben.
Yeah, so Chris, if we wanted to share some names with you for someone's, people that we know that might be beneficial for this study, should we just give you a call?
Absolutely. Yep, or email, either way. Thank you.
I think I have a few for you.
Good.
Thank you, Ms. Farben.
Yeah. I just gotta say, Chris, we've had just a couple of casual conversations, and your excitement about this project kind of tickled me then, and leaves me almost speechless tonight. What a, what a great job bringing it forward and putting it together, and you can tell there's some passion behind the work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Resnick.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. So one of the reasons behind this, I suppose, you know, historical, and we want to preserve this, but so much of, a lot of people are us and them, and, you know, this is why, you know, there's these discriminations going on, they're not part of us. But this survey proves that a lot of people have been us for a long time, and they belong here, and they have a long tradition of being here, and they've contributed to the community. That's part of what you're doing?
Yes. I mean, that's, that is our goal, to be able to, you know, as Kristen Anderson-Brooker said, that one of her students said at Loris College, that they're making black Dubuques visible by doing this research, by bringing this history to light, because it's just something we haven't told before. And so being able to weave it back into our story of Dubuque is really important, and we need to do this basis to understand what we have, what the history is, what buildings are still here that we can celebrate, that, you know, and, and that story. So, you know, our next step sort of think about what comes next? How do we make this accessible to the, the visitor, to Dubuques, so they can use this and understand it?
Yeah, Ms. Wethel.
The way that you talked about weaving the stories and putting flesh on the bones of the stories, that's just a beautiful way to say it. And I, I appreciate in having young children, raising them in Dubuque, to share this with them and with future generations. I think it's accessibility, as you said, now is the, you've done all this work, and we want people to see it. So thanks for all your work, everybody on the team.
Well, first I want to echo the thanks, I mean, to you especially, Chris, and then the, the team of consultants that you worked with, Bill, for the work that you and Heritage Works are doing with all this. And then obviously, I mean, there was a whole team, you know, you mentioned Loris College, University of Dubuque. I mean, we've had quite a few people working on this, and you can tell the amount of work that has gone into it, and this is not easy. It, I mean, digging up information like this and finding all the things and putting this story together is actually a real challenge. So, so thank you very much for taking the time to do that. You mentioned a little bit about what's next, but one of the things that Wally said is, you know, you've had a lot of groups reaching out to you and saying, you know, what can we, when are we gonna hear about this? When can we get a presentation? Am I correct in saying that you're basically in the middle of this right now? I mean, it's, or at a point where you're not quite, you're still gathering information, you're adding information today. You said the end of 2023 is when we want this?
We have to complete it by the end of 2023. I think our goal is to try to do it mid-2023. We're still collecting and putting the information We're still collecting and putting the information together. There'll be a multiple-property document form that comes out of it, so really, you know, that research paper. The GIS story map is just a way to be able to take individual stories and make them accessible. And so, we're still doing the research. I appreciate leads, if we can. We've done two outreach sessions where we just reached out to the black community, and we had really good participation. We also did another outreach session with the Dubuque Museum of Art and had standing room only. So, so we're able to be able to get information, and we're still working on it. But, yeah, we're really starting to think about, how do we make this accessible so someone can make an app and walk around the neighborhood and have a virtual experience that way? How do we be able to make this accessible? Because this is not super accessible to children right now, right? So, I mean, what are, what are, what do we need to do next to, and that's what I talk about when I talk about accessibility, certainly web, but also exploring Dubuque. So, there's all sorts of great ways that other communities are, are being able to engage around areas of loss. So, when we don't have the building anymore, how do we make that experience? How do, how do people understand that experience? So, there's a lot of cool ways people are doing it. And that's one of the things that, when I talk about like breaking what we're doing, like how we've done it before, that's kind of, we need to think differently. It's, it's more than just a report, and we were very concerned going into this, that we wouldn't have, I mean, concerned, I think it, we held off for a while, because we probably will not be able to make it a National Register District, but I don't know. But there are disparate properties that could be honored that way, but we do have a lot of loss. But, but you know what? If we can't make it a National Register District, then maybe it's a Heritage District. And maybe we do the other things to demarc the neighborhood, to be able to tell the stories of people and families.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just thinking, you're thinking as we're, as I'm listening to this, about all the exciting ways to be able to tell this story. And you're doing it really for the first time for a lot of people, you know, for a whole generation, multiple generations of people that have never heard this story before. And I think it's a really important one to tell, and I'm, I'm very, very, I'm very glad that we're doing this. I'm just very happy that this is something that Dubuque is taking on, and very excited to see where it goes next and all the possibilities. So, thank you for the update and all the work, once again, and I'm looking forward to hearing more as we, we get into this next year here. Any other questions before we wrap up? All right, well, thank you again for the time. We really appreciate it.
And thank you for letting me do my job. It's great.
Well, there being no further business, we will stand adjourned for this work session.